Call the meeting room to order for the Reno County Planning Commission. December 19, 2024 meeting. Staff, if you please call or roll.
Shortfeger.
Here.
Stran.
Here.
Schaefer.
Here.
Seltzer.
Here.
Macklin.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Gerson.
Here.
Welcome to everyone. Hope everyone has had a good month in your packets. You will have had, hopefully, you've had a chance to review the minutes from our November 21 meeting. Chair will entertain a motion on those.
Chairman, I move for approval of the minutes as they were submitted.
Good. Been moved in second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Minutes are approved. New business tonight in your packets also. This is an annual, we have three items of business that are part of an annual activity. First item of business is approval of, or consider for approval, the Planning Commission Resolution 2024-01, setting the dates, time, and location of the 2025 Reno County Planning Commission meetings. Chair will entertain a motion, and then we can discuss after the fact.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we adopt the proposed dates, time, and places of Planning Commission meeting for next year as presented.
Second. All in favor. Any discussion? We'll just do a voice vote on this one. All in favor of approving the Resolution 2024-01, setting the dates for 2025, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution is adopted. The next item of business is review of the comprehensive plan. And actually, at this point, we look for any additions or corrections that may have, you may have, may want to bring forth as a, as a part of our annual process.
We're also reviewing the zoning and subdivision regulations. Is that correct?
That'll be on the next one, yeah.
Oh, okay. I got them backwards.
Yep. Sorry. Yeah, I did get ahead of myself. So we're doing C and C first, and then we'll do B.
All right.
Yep, sorry. I turned the page too darn quick. It's that new modern alphabet. Any suggestions for letter C?
Last year, we come up with a pretty long list, and we've done some of those.
Yep, yep, for sure. And really, any changes we, we will make will kind of will be determined based upon what happens after the first year with our, with our solar regulations and those types of things. We'll be making some changes within that, I believe. Might be some text changes. Okay. Any other comments? We'll go back to letter B, that modern, the modern one.
What?
The zoning and subdivision regulations. And I agree, Harley, we've had, we have accomplished a fair amount of what we've, what we've set out to do, but we do have some others. I mean, we still have kind of a laundry list. And Don, I don't know if you still have, I don't know if you or Mark have that list, but I know a piece of that is, is the ag lots flip.
Yes.
And setbacks and, and, oh, what else is in there? Setbacks.
And the ratio.
Yes.
Length ratio. All that needs to be discussed and thought about.
I think that's on our, that's high on our list. It's been on our list for quite some time.
Yeah, it's something that we really need to do a long time ago, but we got kind of sidetracked.
Okay. So once we get past the solar regulations, that probably be the first.
Next subject.
Okay. Good, good, good. Were any other additions that any of the other commissioners would like to, like to add? Okay.
Back.
We'll move on through. Letter D, case 2023-10, discussion and possible action on creating Article 26 of the Reno County zoning regulations to regulate commercial solar energy systems. We need a motion. We didn't ever, did we table it? I don't remember that we did anything formal. I think we just.
No, there's no motion or anything like that from the board. It's just a continued discussion of the board on regs.
I didn't remember doing anything official, so I wanted to make sure my memory was correct. So we'll just continue on.
Yeah, so it's just a continued discussion and everything.
Part of our homework, well, part of our homework was, was to get, put together a list for the resolution. Staff, I know you, you've shared some information in our packet, the resolution for like the, oh, goodness, development agreement and so forth.
Sure, I can give it the board a brief update.
You want to give a brief update of what you've updated and.
Get everybody on the same page. So last month, we discussed some of the changes that I think staff recommended to the, to the board here, plus the board also recommended to staff some additional changes. Some of the more, you know, maybe complicated ones, I highlighted in yellow for your review, like even on the first page, you talked about, you know, with private solar, you know, referencing that article in Article 15. So some of those are highlighted. There's some of the little medial ones I would call, like where it's just a word smithing, or it's changing a word here or there. I did not highlight for the board, but what you have in your packet is the latest version based off of our discussion from last month. Also, off of our discussion from last month, the board is interested in seeing a resolution for a lot of the items that we would like to have in a developers' agreement, but we now are going to shift that and put that into a county, excuse me, a county planning commission resolution. And so that's the other document that you have in your packet there. Those are all the items that I believe this board directed me to put into the resolution based off the discussion last month here. Those are items that were previously in the regulations, and they were taken out of the regulations and put in, into this resolution format. And then lastly, my little memo to, to the board toward the end of the meeting, you might recall, last month, I made, I think a lot of the discussion came from, you know, Garth about additional topics that you may want to consider for the regulations or the resolution. And so I hope I captured what was said toward the end of the meeting from everybody, and so I listed those seven topics there in the memo, so.
One thing I might mention, note, or I noticed, I guess, is that, you know, in the original document we had a month ago, in the development agreement, we had by provisions for decommissioning and indemnity. And I know those are not, now they're not in the resolution. And we also haven't put anything into regulations regarding the decommissioning agreement or indemnity. I think we had talked about doing that, to taking those out of the development agreement, putting those back into the regulations.
So, so page 2612.
Okay. Which, which, letter K. Are you looking at the new one or the old?
I'm looking at the current one that I gave you.
Okay.
So, under Article 2610, it talks about the decommissioning agreement, and then letter K talks about, under the decommissioning agreement, a surety or other financial guarantee accepted by the county council.
Right.
Yeah, so is that covered?
But what I was talking about, I think, in the last meeting, though, was taking those out of the development agreement and putting those into the, as a part of the regulations, so that any potential developer would know what was going to be required of them at determination of the contract, or the conditional use permit, or the end of their project. So it's not, something that's not really negotiable from commission to commission, which is sudden black and white, saying these are what's, what was going to be required when that project comes offline, to return that ground to its normal state, and not make it subject to a development agreement, but actually put that in the regulations.
Under the decommission.
Well, as a separate, separate part of the regulation, not within the development agreement.
Right, yeah.
And same thing.
I don't know if I'm, if I'm, because the decommissioning is still in the regulations.
Well, you've got, you've got it in there as part of the, let me see where.
Or as the development agreement. I think I know what you're saying.
I don't know if I do.
Says the following matters, the following subject matters listed below and in the planning commission resolution may be addressed.
So maybe it's just a matter of changing the word? No. What I'm saying is taking that out of that section of, of the regulations and putting it in an entirely separate section that deals strictly with the decommissioning and another one with the indemnification. So you're, I took the liberty, if you will, of. Okay. Giving you some, some information.
All right.
Pass these out. Stag these out of Butler County's regs. I thought they were fairly comprehensive. Let you all look at them. Read them and weep.
This just has to do with the decommissioning thing. So you're saying that.
Well, it already says, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused, I guess. We can, we'll flesh it out. We're, we're working with paragraph 26-110. And it states in there that a decommissioning agreement with the county commissioners will, shall be recorded at the register of deeds. So you're wanting to move this forward in the regulations, not at the commissioner level?
Because the, right now, the information on the decommissioning agreement is under 26110.
Right.
Right. Which those are the following subject matters listed below and in the planning commission resolution may be addressed in the discretion of the county commission and developers' agreement, or a series of development agreements.
Okay.
So it's saying they may be, maybe.
Right.
So we're not, they're not saying it has to be done. So, yeah, there's a, there's a provision in there for a decommissioning agreement, but it may or may not be done.
So I can change that to shall or reword it?
I would prefer to have that out as a totally separate regulation, just like I gave you there.
As a separate article.
Separate article.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
And going into a little more depth of what's required. You know, if the project goes under, they've got, you know, restored the ground, and they do, you know, concrete down to three or four feet, or whatever depth we want, remove all the fencing and all that kind of stuff.
All right, yeah. I mean, that may have been an oversight on my part, leaving that word "may" in there. You know, we, I added in the planning commission resolution to make sure that they understand that, hey, look for this planning commission resolution, but I probably inadvertently left the word "may."
Well, the idea of the development agreement was to provide the county commissioners a guideline of things that we felt they should consider.
Yes.
Not that they had to consider. Whereas the decommissioning agreement is something, I think, that should be required.
Should require, right.
Should be required and not.
I need to reword that.
Development agreement. And I'd like to see that out of the development agreement entirely and put it as a separate regular section in the regulations.
How about item two in that same paragraph in, in the decommission agreement?
Yeah, like, that's the other one we talked about, Garth. Yeah, so those two things, I think when we went over these last month, those were the two items that we had some discussion about, pulling those out and putting them in as separate articles, if you will, in the regulations.
Yeah, I think it's the word "may," like you said, I think I kind of, it's, because that gives the, then the.
I'm not saying not, not "may" or "shall" or whatever else. I say just take it out of the development agreement section, out of that 26110 completely, and put it in a different section, saying, you know, decommissioning agreement, here's what's going to be required.
Create a 26110 with just the decommissioning agreement and a 26111, and then move all the numbers down, whatever it is.
And the same thing on the original, we had one month ago on the indemnity, which would be on here, item three on the, whatever section that was. You know, 26110, item three, what is the indemnity agreement?
Under the document from last month?
Yes, yes. That, that we also talked about, pulling that out, making that a separate article of regulation. So it's not, it's not part of the development agreement.
Counsel had, can't look at any of what we've done so now, so far?
No, I have not shared this with the county council yet. Like I alluded to the board in my, when I sent the packet, yeah, this was just a very rough draft as to what a planning commission resolution could look like, as far as the, the top part, as far as all the whereas and the wording. I was hoping to get a little more consensus from the board on the, the content or the meat of the resolution before I would maybe take it to Patrick on that. But to answer your question, no, he has not seen this.
I guess the thought that enters my mind is we're, we're getting pretty detailed and/or pretty deep in a couple of these things, and sooner or later, council needs to be part of our council.
Yep. Yes, definitely. I agree.
Well, you see, I, you know, I said last month, and I still maintain the position that I think the decommissioning agreement is a very important part of the regulations for solar, that, you know, you think you're going to be in the ground for 25 years, or whatever the expected life is, and then they may be just abandoned, or they may be abandoned, you know, prior to that, you never know. But we have some, some teeth in the regulations that say, okay, if this, this happens and that project no longer is providing, electricity is no longer functioning, what happens to it? They can't just walk away from it. And what do they need to do in order to restore that ground to its former state? And, you know, then also provide the surety in some form to provide the financial means to do that, to ensure that they have the, the means to do that.
Yeah. Because that one word, that word "may" provides, provides an issue.
Yeah, particularly on this, because, I mean, and putting it in the development agreement is the issue for me, because I don't want it in there. I want it as a separate regulation.
I see what you're saying.
I don't think it should, I don't think that should be something that should be negotiated every time. I think it should be just set in black and white, saying, anybody wants to do a solar project, here's what you're going to have to do when that project goes offline.
I see, yeah. Yeah, it needs to be worded different if this board wants to make it as a requirement.
So you, you would just say, you'd have to almost wordsmith that whole paragraph.
Yeah, I think so.
Basically just saying that, you know, review of the planning commission resolution 25, 2025-01, and that's probably about it. I mean, I'm oversimplifying here. And then at that point, you make a new paragraph, whether it's 111 and you rename the rest of them, or you go down to the, go to the, go to the end and make a 113? Do the decommissioning? Is that how that would, is that how that?
Think about it and look at it. Yeah, that's one option. And just move everything down one number. I could do that.
Two numbers, if you want to include the indemnity as a, you know, separate.
Do that, or make it an A and a B. If we're going to make it as, as a part of the regulation, it could be under, yeah, I don't know. I'll have to look at it. We'll have to discuss. We have decommissioning as one, one article, and indemnification as a separate article, or can we put them together?
I don't think you could put it all in 26110, because that refers to, you know, the, the developers' agreement, if that's what that's.
What I was saying is, yeah, that whole paragraph.
Whether, whether the surety could be. I'd have to rework the paragraph to take out "may" and take out.
Or something like that.
The developers' agreement.
Would be the, you know, the decommissioning agreement would be, you know, the indemnity and three, C would be the developers' agreement.
I, I mean, I could leave it in there, like, if we want them to have a developers' agreement, but then create another, another, like, 26111, and then go with decommissioning, and then maybe 112 is the indemnification, or make it an A and a B. I'll have to, I'll have to look at that.
What's the opinion of the rest of the board? What's, what are your thoughts?
Well, I fully support Steve's position on having wanted to be moved to regulation and out of the development agreement. But I have a, a related question. I, I understand the resolution, but with that word "may" in there, I'm not sure I understand the difference between the, you know, this says, the following subject matters listed below and in the planning commission resolution. Why do we need both?
You talking about in the regulation, or are we talking about in the resolution?
On that same area, on 26-11.
Yeah, that's.
Why do we need both? Why do we need the resolution if we're going to say items listed below may be addressed in the discretion of the county commissioners in a development agreement? I don't understand the added value of the resolution.
I think that's what the confusion is. I think the paragraph, I think, needs to be reworked to kind of remove, remove the planning commission resolution and the requirements of the regulations. I think that's what the confusion is, is being generated by that. I need to rework that paragraph. So I think probably that whole paragraph is going to get severely changed to separate out the "may" under the developers' agreement and the "shall" under the regulations.
I think what Garth's saying, though, is there's a duplication in there where you're, you're listing all this stuff that may be included in a developments agreement, but that information is also contained, listed in the resolution.
Shouldn't be in the regulations.
It shouldn't. What are we, where is?
So. It's coming out of the regulations.
Yeah, I don't see where that's listed.
Yeah, well, it's, you know.
I mean, because I thought all that was pulled.
Well, maybe it has been.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing under that was the decommissioning.
Okay, yeah, that's right.
Because that's what I worked on.
Every indemnification on this.
Everything on the resolution.
Right.
Is what we pulled out of that.
Put in or.
Yeah, okay, I see what you're doing, yeah. Okay, I'm with you. I understand. Okay.
Yeah.
So the only thing that was in the regulations was decommissioning and indemnification per this board's direction last month. But the top part of 26110, the description, is what's drawing more confusion. So everything that was in the resolution now was under 26110, and this board told us to take it out of the regulations.
Right.
Put it in the resolution. And so the two paragraphs, I think, as they're written now, are probably drawing some confusion, and they don't make sense. So I need to reword that. So I think you're.
So if we, if we take the indemnification and the decommissioning into a separate line item, so to speak, then you could reword this thing, because that's going to take away basically majority of, of what you've got in 26110 now.
Yes.
And the only thing you'd have to do is somehow reference the resolution.
Right.
So that once somebody read in the regs would see, know to look at the resolution.
So can I ask a question? So I, I think the one thing that the, that the regulations have to say is there shall be a, a. Development, correct. Shall be one. And then it references the guide to how to create one with your advice to this. Now, now, this is why I'm a little confused. So on the decommissioning, I think the regulations should say there shall be a decommissioning.
Agreed.
And then is there going to be a resolution that, with all those subjects for that?
I don't, I don't think.
You're talking like you want them in the regulations instead of a resolution. So you're going to treat the decommissioning different than the.
Development agreement.
Development agreement.
That's what I'm hearing.
And that's what you're.
And the rest of the board's in agreement, treat decommissioning.
Decommissioning and indemnification.
As a requirement.
As a requirement within the regulations.
So you're going to have subjects that are a requirement?
Yeah, I think, well, I think we're just transferring the existing subjects and making them a regulation instead of a maybe.
Right.
So we're making the decommissioning a regulations, but not the development agreement as regulations?
Right. Yeah, I, I think the idea behind was the development agreement involves a lot of non-land use issues that the county commissioners have the right to make decisions on and not us. But the, the decommissioning agreement, that's really a land use regulation, what happens with the land at the end of this project.
Yeah, I think that needs to be covered. That surprises me that that wouldn't be covered in the lease with the landowner. Maybe, I don't know. I mean, I don't know either. But, you know, if that's.
The lease is. Developer. Landowner.
Yeah. And it would be, but you know, you can drive around in Reno County, or really anywhere, and see lots of industrial projects that were walked away at one point. And I think it's reasonable to put a stopgap in there so that this doesn't happen on a.
In California a couple of years ago, and drove through some of the big old wind farms there, and you can see the Darlington Wind Tower is still there with, you know, blades hanging down, and they're just junk, and they're still standing there.
Okay, I want to go back to what Don said, that, or at least what I heard, we don't want a developers' agreement required in the regulation. But in my mind, I think I would like to put that in there, and then here are, by resolution, here are, are examples of things that may be, may be considered in the developers' agreement. Now, you heard me wrong. I said that within the regulations, a development agreement shall be.
Okay, yeah.
And then reference it to the resolution for ideas to.
Okay, yeah.
That's.
It is required.
I think, I think a development agreement's required, and a decommissioning should be required. Now, where you put that, one of them obviously is going to go in this, and where you put the development, I mean, the decommissioning is up to you. I think they're both required. I agree.
So the resolution, all that is, is a recommendation.
Topics.
To, of topics to the commission.
Yes.
To the county commission.
Yes, because they're the ones that's creating it.
As I read through this, I didn't see in, in any others that come about, you know what I'm saying? There's any other topics that may come to, to.
Catch-all.
Yeah, the, the catch-all statement. Is there, is there something like that that I missed in this document, or is it not written there?
Probably not.
You know, we're, we're giving them a finite.
Number eight at the end.
Number eight. Any documents relative to specific requests may be included with the development. Okay.
Is that covered, or you want more general language, or what? I mean, I was hoping that that would be the catch-all.
Yeah, I don't.
They could, basically, that, that was saying is they can, they can require anything that they want to, just not listed here.
Okay. The word "document" confines me. I don't know what the right word is there, but.
Topic or. Any material?
Any, any other, any other, yeah.
Topic or really?
Subject matter.
Subject relative.
That's what we're referencing here in the development agreement. You say the following subject matters.
And that, that way, we're not limited to having to produce a piece of paper that says this is what we want to do.
You say any other subject matter relative to a specific progress may be included within the development.
I like that. I like that better, because the document seems confining.
Yeah, so any other subject matter, just take out documents out of that on eight.
That's why I have you here, is to help me.
That way, that way, our, our commission has, has power of the pen. They can use this document and add to it as they, as they wish.
So just say any other subject matter.
I think that the word probably wasn't the best choice.
Well, that's all right. I, that was, I was, I was stumbling on that harder.
I can see, I can see there being some concern with that, that word now. Okay, this was, this was put together pretty quick, by me.
No, that's, you did a fantastic job on this. No, don't, don't, don't get me wrong. I was just, I was just stumbling, I'm stumbling through. I just caught that.
Do we need to think of the process to change what's in this resolution? I mean, let's say we're down the road a couple of years, and like, oh my gosh, there's important stuff that needs to be considered. that needs to be considered in a developer's agreement? Or you just.
Pass a new resolution.
Make a new resolution?
The process to change it would be just this board wanting to bring forth a new subject matter to add to this and then we would just pass a new resolution and overwrite this one.
To amend this?
To amend.
And have to go through a public hearing or?
This is just your suggestions. This doesn't require a public hearing.
So, Don, you kind of touched on it and I want to expand a little bit. So what you're thinking, I'm, I'm, I'm kind of like Garth. I want to, want you to explain maybe I might have caught something wrong or I might have caught it right and I just want either a head nod or a no. You're, what you're saying is we probably ought to think about with, with the decommissioning and indemnification, putting it in, in the, in the regulations that one is required and then see resolution 2025-02.
That's what, that's what I thought, but I don't, I don't, but.
I know. I'm just, I'm just trying to understand what you're trying to say. Well, hmm.
I think what he was trying to say was that we should put something in the regulations to say, you know, the developer's agreement shall be required.
Right.
And reference them from that over to the resolution as far as the topics that they may want to consider incorporating into that.
So should, so should we write in a decommissioning, shall, a decommissioning agreement shall be required and then have a resolution written with the same topics?
That was my question, Steve. He's on another side of that. And that was just, yeah, so I was thinking, are we going to do the decommissioning like we did the?
Yes, that's kind of.
But it's not, so I didn't know.
No, it just needs to be in the regulations. It doesn't need to be a separate.
I'm okay with that. I'm just trying to.
Separate resolution.
Yes, I mean, of course, separate resolution, yeah.
So we're leaving these subjects out for, for the decommissioning, we're putting the subjects in, the regulations.
The requirements, I'm saying the requirements should be in the regulations. The shall's, the shall's shall be in the regulations. The, the may's will be in the resolution.
Because 25 years from now, there's going to be some things changed on the decommissioning. We're not even there yet. We don't even know what that means.
This is, this is, okay, now we're.
Regulations, they can change the resolution. It's not as easy, but.
We go back to what I was talking about in the resolution, you know, all things included and, and discussion points thereafter. How do we do that in the regulations? We don't want to, we don't want to draw the line and say, this is all you got to do when there might be some more stuff that comes along. Is that, but I guess that's up to the, up to this, this seated commission.
Future.
To, to add that in.
As a public hearing because you're in the regulations.
So when you make them in the regulations, to change the regulations, you got to have a public hearing. If you make anything in the resolution, it's just not require a public hearing.
Could we, could we also add those into the conditions of the CUP if it comes to that?
What?
Could we add that as a condition? Say there's something new that comes to light. Let's just say we got a, we have a new opportunity in how we grade the, the ground back to normal. You know, there's a new, some, some sort of new, new tool to use or what have you. I'm probably using a bad example, but let's just say, let's just use that as an example. How do we, how do we place that? And it's not, let's just say that is not in our decommissioning agreement. How do we put that in with, can we do that at the CUP level saying, hey, we got to have this graded, but I know our, I know our, our regulations say one through, one through 11, but we need to add one more condition that when you.
Well, that couldn't, couldn't that conceivably be done in a developer's agreement? Because there's something like that.
Maybe I'm, maybe I'm.
The plan.
It would be, it would be added as a condition of approval.
Of the CUP.
Yeah. I mean, because, I mean, this is what the regulations, like you said, if there's something else additional that this board wants to add or require of a developer, then.
Then we could do that.
Part of the conditional use from it. And then what we'd want to do is go back at that point and incorporate that in.
If we see that that's an important piece of the piece to.
Yeah, I get it. Just look at wind, for example. You know, we had nothing for regs on wind. It was just whatever this board thinks the condition of approval should be. And so.
Well, we did say the decommission agreement shall be reviewed by the county commission and the applicant every five years when you requested changes.
Are you looking at the sample I gave you, Garth?
No, that's in 26-110.
Okay. Now that you're going in a little bit different direction, that'll probably need to be taken out. The, the review of the developer's agreement could be suggested to be reviewed every five years, but, but the decommission agreement wouldn't be necessarily reviewed every five years because it's a regulation now. It's a shall.
That whole paragraph.
Some of the, some of the other regs that I looked at from other counties had like a review every five years. But that would be a review of the estimated cost.
Yes.
Of decommissioning to ensure that the surety that the, the developer provides is still adding.
Should be this, yeah, yeah. Because in here, I would probably add, you know, the surety agreement and then subject to review every five years.
Are we dancing around the issue of we want to regulate developers' agreements and we want to regulate a decommissioning agreement and then by resolution say, here's some things that may be considered? Is it, is that, is that where we're headed here?
On the development side, yes.
Yes.
Well, I know, but why wouldn't we do the same on the decommission?
Because that, those are, the developer's agreement, we're providing a list, if you will, of things we would like to see the county commission consider to incorporate in their development agreement. They're not required to. Whereas the decommissioning agreement, you know, my, my position is I want that to be a required part of the regulations, not optional. So as Don said, the resolution provides for the things that may be done, whereas the regulations provide for those things that shall be done, that have to be done.
And we think we have a finite list for the decommission agreement?
That's what we've got to work on. I mean, this is what I gave you as a sample. I pulled out of Butler County, I think it was Butler County's regs, which I read through and I thought was fairly comprehensive.
So Mark, you're, you're square on rewriting the, the agreement paragraph, which is now 26-110.
Developer's agreement.
Developer's agreement.
That's a pretty bold statement.
Okay, no, I'm just, you know where we're headed though.
I believe I know where the board has had a guess. And so I think everything in 110 will be.
We're kind of, I'm just trying to nail the jello to the wall.
I think I get a sense of where we're going.
Okay.
If we have consensus from this board. My question would be on the Butler County one you provided, am I incorporating some, all?
That's going to be our next discussion. I just want to make sure that you're, you're, I'm starting at square, not square.
I need to rework 26, in my, in simple terms, I need to rework 26-110 and separate out, separate out more the may of a developer's agreement topics and the requirement of the decommissioning in there. So yes, I will work on that and.
I think what we were, Don was saying is that we're, we want to require, it shall be a.
Well, the, the.
Developer's agreement.
The specifics will be, the specifics will be in the regs require developer's agreement. The may's will be in the.
Resolution that says, here's what we'd like you to consider. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's good.
I probably need to say.
Yeah, the decom, like I said, this, I read through, through three counties. I've got samples of, I felt this was fairly comprehensive and I thought it was, okay, we need something as a starting point if we're going to throw this into the regulations. So.
Well, don't we already have a starting point in 26-110?
Compared to what we have versus what this is, this is a little more detailed, I think.
Probably under, on page 112 under letter I, I would probably like to remove that statement from the existing regs, talking about the landowner's right to be satisfied. I'd probably like to just put that out. If that's okay with the board on that, letter
What about remediation? Is that outside of writing a regulation? You know, let's say 10 years from now, it's discovered that these inverters have been secreting something and the land has to be remediated, you know, like an oil spill or something similar like that.
Yeah, I think something like that type of example would be placing a developer's agreement probably outside of our scope. But that could be a topic we could put.
Should be a topic in there.
It could be a topic in, in the resolution.
Well, wouldn't a toxic release already be covered under existing environmental law?
Yes, yeah.
So you know, like your item J, you say a discussion of circumstances may, that may require decommissioning. Okay, I think we should replace that completely, that's, that item completely with more detailed information on what, you know, what institute for decommissioning.
What paragraph is it? Yeah. Doesn't paragraph J and paragraph L have a lot of overlap?
Yeah.
We just combine those into one?
Well, actually, what I was looking at, if you go onto the sample I gave you on page 60 of that, which is the, what's the page?
And you go down to.
I and J. They give you a little more information as to what is, is.
I would agree. Just remember originally this was written as it was going to be a may. So you'll see wording in there.
Yeah, exactly. I understand. Well, I was just trying to compare these two. A lot of what the Butler County has, you know, we're covering a lot of that here, but in very general terms, and some of that's all right. But if I'm saying, okay, whether circumstances may require a decommissioning, I think we need to come up and state what those circumstances are. That needs to be a specific.
If it's going to be a regulation, then yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. If it was going to be a suggestion, then no, that, those terms would be at the county commission level. So if the board wants to read through that and tell me which ones they would like me
I think A through G in my mind are, they cover.
I've got, I've got a question on, I guess it would be B and C, which are actually, I think we've made it. Because B says you got to remove the top four feet down to the concrete base. And then in C, it is replacing the two bottom feet with subsoil, compares to whatever, whatever in the top two feet. So I think those, you're talking about the same thing there where you're tearing out the concrete. You're replacing, this is what you want to replace it with.
Actually, the.
And you're, you're making that as a separate line item, the replacement, which I think it should be as all together.
Those came forward from the solar regu, from the wind regulations where we.
A lot of that did.
Where there were some decommissioning activities that we learned about, that they took out the concrete to a level and then they.
Yeah, I understand.
Put the dirt over the top. So that's why we wanted, we want to do.
Well, what I'm saying is I think, I think the, to me, item C should be incorporated as part of item B.
So they should be all.
Yeah, say we're going to take out the, the top four feet of ground, you know, down to the concrete base, and you're going to replace it with.
All of this.
Top two feet of, two feet of sand and clay or whatever, and the top two feet of, you know, just, that should all be one, one thing instead of two items.
That's all right.
Getting that on there because I think they're all, we're talking about the same thing.
I'm with you. Everybody else? Is that okay with everyone else? Okay, B and C are combined?
Yep, we'll do that. Okay.
C through G in my mind are, the timeline for removal, I guess would come in the, in the abandonment piece of that puzzle, maybe. I'm looking, I'm looking at what, looking at the example to see what it.
Uh huh.
If it has any.
Yeah, they do somewhere in there. I think this one provides either a year, 18 months. I can't remember what it was. Yeah, one year. 18 months is what does the item K.
I think it's safe to say that, you know, if. We're going to go this route, then I'm going to have to get a lot more specific with this than what's here because I say this is under suggestion. And so I would say, you know, in the second time, you know, is there, is there things that we just want to completely remove or not? I mean, I think, yeah, I mean, I, I'm going to have to get a lot more specific on a lot of these for this board to review anything. Unless you have specifics you think I should put in, I don't like timelines for removal. You want one year, six months or what? You know, then I can do that instead of leaving it up to my discretion.
Yeah, well, I have timelines. If you've got a project like that, 18 months should be more than adequate.
And that's what, that was what Butler County had, wasn't it?
Yeah.
I'd be fine with 18. I can, I can review that and look at that. And I can review the other ones that I had and look at those as well.
Yeah, I think somewhere they provide for the. As far as the removal, you know, all the components should be recycled to the extent that's feasible or possible. You know, we've got, kind of covered that where you don't want to put it in the landfill, county landfill.
I wouldn't, I don't think I'd make that hardcore in case the landfill decides that they can't.
They start taking that stuff, yeah.
That could be, that could be part of the public hearing process. If, if they decide that they do not want to, you know, if they know a project is coming, they should be alerted that, hey, there's potential that there's going to be some.
Yeah, that was 25 years from now.
25.
That was kind of a topic that was brought up last month, you know, in my memo.
For a hailstorm or, you know, I, I.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know if you want to make that, that kind of statement because we don't know if they can or can't.
That should be subject to the county commissioner, the county, yeah.
County commissioner or the director, if they can accept that.
In our regulations, we were talking about letter F, timeline for removal. How about letter M, the timeline when decommission must commence and decommission must be completed? Are those one and the same? You'll have to help me with that.
Yeah, I think, well, I think they could be under a separate topic. Just put it in all under one paragraph.
Okay, well, I think, I think, what I think we're going to need is something in there that says, here's what constitutes action or cause for decommissioning, whether it's abandonment of the project or they have not generated any power from that for a period of 12 months or something like that.
And that's where J and L in our regulations, and I'm going to refer to I and J in this, in the examples that you shared.
Uh huh.
Would be examples. Would be examples of that.
Right.
The definition of what it means to, when they have to decommission, timeline of no production, et cetera.
I mean, you look at, there would be three instances that I can think of real quick where it would affect decommissioning. One is, you know, if they, you know, voluntarily give us notice that they're taking their thing offline or ceasing that project, there will be decommissioning it. Second is if they abandon it, just walk away from it. And third would be if maybe they leave it intact and, and it's providing a minimal amount of, of power, you know, and it just drags on and on and on, but it's not generating anything near its capacity, so it's not really an active project. But they're still generating electricity, so they don't have to tear it down. So we've got to say, okay, you know, that's the third possibility, that if you're not actively, if it's not an active project, then it's going to be considered abandoned and, and subject to decommissioning.
Well, yes, my thought is, is we're, we have a professional staff that runs the county, and that they will be monitoring that all the time and doing something about it if that happens.
Uh huh.
We don't need to write that into some sort of regulation or even resolution.
I think we should have it in there, hardly, saying, these are, these are the acts, the conditions which will cause, you know, the decommissioning to commence, or however you want to word that.
So we're going to determine when those solar panels come off, that they're off the ground? Not the company that owns them?
Well, I'd know, the company that owns it can make that determination if they want. If they say, we're done and we're going to close this thing down, then they can make the determination, notify us, and everything goes forward. If they just turn around and walk away from the project, abandon it, then somehow we have to have a, a means of going in there and saying, okay, we're going to provide you notice that this is an abandoned project, and we're going to require decommissioning for the, for the regulations. Or if they leave it there, just trickle charging, so to speak.
See, that, that's the fine line we walk. I, I think if, if, if the company is still active.
Still what, what institute's active?
Well, that's, that's not our business.
Well.
We're not, we're, we're, if, if that company believes that it is, that it's in their best interest to keep that solar farm running, then it really isn't our, our business to determine whether or not it's profitable or not.
And they're fulfilling their obligations of maintaining it, paying the taxes.
Exactly.
Keeping their indemnity agreement up and all that.
Yes. I, I, I think that's a very fine line. Now, I, I agree with you, and if they walk away, if they, if they, they put a padlock on the gate and they aren't in there at a certain amount of time, then there's probably some action that we need to write into the, into the regulations, however.
Go ahead.
They can't stop paying taxes on that property.
No.
That, that's the fine line.
Or stop paying their lease.
Or stop paying their lease, or fail to maintain it, you know, turns into an attractive nuisance. But if they're doing all those things, do we care how many kilowatt hours it makes?
No.
I think so.
Not our, not our game.
Well, they also could have a, some kind of an equipment problem that they can't get fixed in six months. You know, it, stuff I've read about the grid, you know, is some of those big transformers take 24, 36 months to, to get one. They may not be able to replace a component, they may not be able to make it power, but if they're still paying the taxes, paying the lease, and keeping the place clean, I don't see that as a problem.
If you parallel it with the oil industry, I mean, they, they turn on and turn off wells depending on how the market's doing, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think electricity is going to be any different, maybe. And they even redevelop old wells that have been abandoned, and then the pump jacks have been, concrete has been gone, they re, they redevelop it. So I, I, I'm with you.
I'll buy into that argument. So they can either abandon it or voluntarily, you know, shut it down.
Yeah, I think if you look in your example, Steve, that abandonment paragraph.
Right.
It's, it's the written notice piece. If that, if that developer delivers written notice that they are, that they're, that they're done, then that's when the decommissioning process begins.
I think the regu-, the regulations should say how it's maintained, and then when they, as long as they maintain it that way, pay the leases.
I don't think you say that they have to provide us notice before decommissioning can be effected, because if they just walk away from it, you know, they're not going to provide notice, you know, and they're basically abandoning the project. So you've got it out there, it's going to be overgrown with weeds, it's not going to be, property's not going to be maintained, maybe they're still paying their taxes or something, or leases, I don't know, but, you know, lease payments, we don't necessarily know that unless somebody sues them.
I think it needs to be based on taxes, lease payments, and maintenance. If they're paying, paying their bills, paying their taxes, and it looks okay.
Maintaining the property.
Yeah, then it's okay. If they need to shut it down for a period of time for whatever reason.
Yeah, those, those are exceptions. I mean, we can make exception for that, if, you know, your equipment requirements, that they can, they can, you know, make a case to the county commissioner, or the planning commissioner, or somebody, and say, gee, we need a waiver of this time requirement because
Well, while we're on this subject, what about default on maintenance? I mean, taxes, I think that takes care of itself, lease payments, you know, that's a.
Lease payments all go to the landowners.
contractual obligation will take care of itself, but in terms of maintenance, let's say, they kind of, they're still generating power from this facility, but the fence is broken down, the weeds are growing.
I think that's part of the.
No lock on the gate. Do we have a enforcement or default provision somehow?
I think there's something in the development agreement, suggestions about, you know, maintenance of the grounds.
Well, it's in the regulations as well, so, you know, it would be a violation of the regulations, it would be treated just like any other violation of the regulations, you know.
So when we say that the gate has to be locked and there's no lock, then?
In your example, if the fence is not being maintained or so, then, you know, they would be contacted to fix it, and if they don't, then we would.
So they're out of regulation, and then does that give the county the ability to enforce something?
Yeah, it's just like any other violation of any other conditional use permit, they're not, they're not in compliance, because you've got to remember, you know, these are just the regulations to develop the project. You have the conditional use permit, where we'll have specific conditions of approval. One of those, like we have on like almost every single conditional use permit, is that the county reserves the right to rescind the conditional use permit if you're not in compliance with the conditions of the conditional use.
That's what I was looking for.
So if they're not, if the fence is leaning and the grass is tall or whatever, then, you know, if they don't want to maintain it, then we can go and rescind the conditional use permit.
In that case, is there kind of a notification process where you send them a letter and say, gee, you know, you're out of compliance, you need to get so long, bring us back into compliance?
Would be like this case we just had about the.
Yeah. You did that, right thing. You were sending them a letter, they didn't do anything.
I would envision it like it would be a phone conversation with the operations manager, the contact, you know, that, hey, we have an issue, correct it, and then if it's not corrected, then a written notice of violation we provided, and that would start the documentation of a violation, and then we would go from there, just like the truck business, anything else.
You didn't have to have guidelines to tell you how to do that.
Right, right.
We, we know how to do that. We have a professional staff in the county, not only in this office here, but at the, the executive of the county, he knows.
Yep.
They all know how to do that.
Yeah.
So.
So, so then from that perspective, if, if, say, the operator files bankruptcy, tosses the keys in the ditch and walks away, I mean, over time, it would start violating their conditional use permit, right?
Oh, yeah.
Regardless of whether or not we have it written in the decommission plan.
Yeah.
So really, the primary goal is just to ensure that somebody's thinking about it during this process, what happens at end of life, and perhaps.
Requiring a surty.
Yeah, financial surty.
Providing the financial means to take care of it.
So then the county's not on the back, it's not either the landlord, property owner, or the county's responsibility.
That's why some of the other counties I saw, where they review the, the estimates of the decommissioning costs on a periodic basis, to make sure that that surty is adequate and will be adjusted either up or down.
The, try and keep it separate, that the regulations are going to tell a person how the property should be developed. You know, you can develop a solar farm, you can develop a truck terminal under these regulations, this is what we want to see the property look like when you're developing it. The conditional use permit will then list specific requirements, but then will also be the enforcement tool if they violate the regulations. Okay, so it's two, two separate topics right there. You know, no conditional use permit's going to be issued without the county having the ability to go in and rescind that, that conditional use permit if it's a violation of these regulations. That's how we enforce the conditional use permit, is, is having that in there, and then we go back and we say, this is what the regulations are, so you need to abide by that.
Who manages the surety?
That'd be administration. That'd be up to them.
Are they ready for us to tell them that they're going to have to?
We'll see.
I, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, we're, we're, we're writing some, we're potentially writing something in that we need to make sure.
They're used to doing that on other construction-type projects, aren't they? I'm sure they have surties on other projects that the county enters into.
Yeah, that's something that will have to be tracked.
Dr. Puchetoff, probably got some tracking software on their parking now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I can rewrite this section, and we can have that ready for, for January. I'll get it to the point, I think, to at least this board can see, see it revised, and then maybe you would have further, further questions and more specific things that you'd want to put into it, because right now, it seems like it's, it's mixed together, and it's hard to discern what, what should be in the regulations and what should be out here, because you're seeing mays and chows mixed together, the resolution, and then the document of the regulations.
I think we need to do it like we did before, we need to rewrite and put that stuff in, in there, and anything that we have in question that you guys need to think about will be highlighted in yellow or something.
There you go. I think that'd be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're just kind of, if you give us a path, and we can work off of that.
We've got a moratorium until end of March, or first of March, or what is it?
Yeah, and then as long as it takes, but I hope it doesn't take any longer. But yes, it is, it's March 1st.
Before the end of the year.
It's March 1st. That should be fine. I hope, I don't know. It will be what it needs to be.
Because, yeah. Because once we rubber stamp this, here, it just goes straight to the commission. We, our public hearings are done for this person.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then they can turn around and send it right back to us.
Well, that'll be their prerogative.
It will be a new commission.
That's why we want to try to get it right.
There you go.
So, are there things in the resolution that I need to change right now, other than number eight, the wording? I mean, that's, it's going to be part of it, or, or at least now you kind of know what the document is, come back with additional suggestions next month, or? I think, I mean, this is something that you can modify and you can add to if you want something additional in there that you would like for them to consider, additional topics or more clarity.
I think you did an excellent job, Mark.
I think, would they change that item eight?
Yeah, change item eight.
What are you doing there?
And then, and then run it by the county counselor.
All right. If you think, if you think this document is somewhat close, I mean, somebody just show your review, yeah, I can run it past the county counselor for his, his take on it.
Do you need anything official to get, get it that far, or are you just going to take it to?
No, I don't think so. If that's, I don't think so. Because like I say, you know, he would want, he would mainly need to review the wheras and stuff, you know, I tried to, I tried to put in the point that, you know, look, we think these are important, but yet it's a bunch of mays in there, so I think.
My opinion is, is it's, with the changes on number eight, you're, you're about as close as you're going to get. My opinion. Okay, well, we have the memo from Mark about, there's seven things listed on that. I don't know if any of those, we want to.
That's the other, I mean, limit on size of the farm, that's going to be the, the other biggie, I think, that we want to talk about that, I mean. Some of them are limited to, you know, 1,000, 1,500 acres, you know.
What were we talking about?
No. The, you know, or do you want to, do you want to see 6,000 acres of solar panels in Reno County? This question, in one, one project.
Well, in my mind, it would.
If it's, sometimes they pay their property tax, yeah.
And if, if we have 6,000 contiguous acres and nobody around, then I would say, well, why not? Or, if not 6,000, how about 2,000 or 1,500?
You're dealing with a zoned area of Reno County, and I don't think you're going to find 2,000 or 6,000 contiguous acres that nobody around is the thing. We've already excluded all the area of the cheaty watershed, you know, it's in the map we had on that, so.
You know, I don't have a magic number, so that's why I think it would be depending upon site location.
This would be, correct me if I'm wrong, thanks, George, you mentioned this, you know, this would be the maximum acres for one project. Then I think along with that, if you choose to set that, then what would there be for a separation distance between one project and another?
Right, 10 miles from wherever, yeah.
Okay, so that's, that's kind of the topic, I mean, if, if this is something this board thinks they want to do, I can put it together, but I don't know, I don't, sorry, I don't know what this board wants as far as specifics go.
If we don't have any number, where, where would it come up in the conditional use permit process?
That's correct.
Let's say somebody said.
Size. Far as the size limitation, you couldn't.
That'd be too late then.
No, I mean, we would only learn of the project size at that point.
We would be 1,000, 10,000 acres, there would not be a limit, and you wouldn't have the ability to say, no, 10,000 acres is too much, I'd like to just see it at 5,000.
If you want to limit it, it needs to be in the regulations.
Yeah.
So if you. Yeah. So if you look at, you know, well, sec-, one section of ground, 640 acres, you have, so you have two sections of ground, which are two square miles. You have solar panels, you're looking at 1,200, almost 1,300 acres. That's a lot of ground to be covered with solar panels. Also, a lot of ground that's going to be taken out of, out of, you know, ag production or cattle grazing, and then, then you start getting into, you know, the wildlife issue as far as the location of the thing, whether or not we just need to look at providing wildlife corridors within the thing, you start getting big enough, you know. corridors within the thing, you start getting big enough, you know.
How would county roads be handled? Let's say in your example, if two, two sections, they managed to get a lease on two full sections, and there's a.
That's a fancy section individually, I guess. You're not gonna close the roads, are you?
Nope. Not unless the landowners petition to close them, and there's no objection to it.
Right. But that's, that process is already out there, we don't have to worry about that.
Just gonna throw a number out, and we can discuss it once you get something written up, okay?
Okay.
Or, we can discuss it here, and we can work forward. Six hundred and forty contiguous acres and a five-mile separation. That's kind of what I'm thinking. So, every five miles, you can have another section of ground that can be consumed by solar panels.
I'd go with that.
Do we know anything about the magic of six hundred and forty?
Other than it's a square mile.
I mean, from a.
Most, most, most parcels are, are separated up in, in multiples that make up six hundred and forty.
As far as a feasible project, is that low-end? I don't know.
Well, if you gotta build a transmission line somewhere, how many acres does it take to support the cost of that transmission line?
That, that would be.
And that, we don't know that.
That would be.
And six forty may not be enough.
And that would be up to the developer, if they wanna, if they wanna do something like that.
But in the market, if we say six forty, and the market says, hey, we gotta have at least seven hundred and fifty to, to break even, we may not even need regulations in Reno County.
That's, that's something you probably need to look into, but that's a starting point.
Yep, I just was, I was just throwing something on the wall to get started.
Yeah, I assume most of you have seen solar projects, you know, of something similar size, I've seen them out there that cover at least a section of ground, and it's a lot of black.
Let's start with that number in your, in, in your draft.
So, this board wants me to incorporate that into the regs?
Incorporate it as a starting point, and then we're gonna do some research as, as, whether we need to adjust that number. I have a feeling that number will change, but at least it gives us a square board to work off of. And that, that five-mile separation, that number may change too, but with, we gotta get a, we gotta, gotta get a baseline.
Well, the point being, is you would like to entertain the thought of, of setting a limitation.
Yes.
So.
If that's the consensus.
So, not disagreeing or nothing, so, when we talk about a land use, and you're gonna limit something, so you're gonna tell the landowners what they can have or not have, and so, because it's using up too much land that you think should be used for something different than what the landowner wants to use it for, I mean, it just has to really be thought out. Does that make sense, what I said? So.
Well, we're not telling the landowners, I mean, the.
You may be telling them they can't have one because of.
Well, because, yeah, the company wants to put their solar panels on this section of ground or their section of ground, but they, they have, you know.
Or you may say, okay, it's only allowed six hundred and forty acres, so the guy across the street can't, you can't have one.
Right.
It's, I, I think a lot about landowner rights.
We did, we did a little bit of that when we did the wind, based on how many, how many wind tires they, you know, what, what the, what the separation of tires was gonna be. That kind of came, that kind of comes into that, kind of the same mindset.
But you wasn't eliminating sections at a time.
No.
And here you are.
But it.
Not saying that you're not correct, but you may be eliminating five sections.
Yeah, based upon the, the, the separation.
Yes. So, you're telling those landowners, you can't have this.
Well, I, I'm just, I've, I threw, threw something out there for, for discussion, but.
I, I'm just throwing that out, just to.
We, we worked really hard on a limited scale to get a two, two-mile separation, and those are ten acres.
I know. It's, it's hard not to squash on landowners' rights.
I, I get it.
It's different.
Then, why didn't we, I mean, if I back into that, what I kind of remember is, well, our valley already had some property picked out, and we had to kind of, you know, was three miles enough? I don't, I don't remember that we had any real logic when we said, well, they have to be two miles apart, is that because of, it looks better, or?
Was some of the logic so that a more, larger, commercial, industrial-sized project couldn't slide under the limited-scale regulations?
Alan's correct.
Was that the reasoning behind what we did?
Because a commercial project could come in and do a ten-acre side, and three hundred feet down the road, do another ten-acre side, and incorporate a commercial site without incorporating a commercial site.
It's no longer limited scale when they did that.
Yeah.
Right.
So, that's why the separation was put in place for there. Didn't have anything to do, you know, with the site, it had everything to do with trying to prevent a commercial solar operation from using limited-scale regulations and building a site ten acres at a time.
It was a loophole closed instead of a reduction of rents.
Because like a, yeah.
Exactly.
Right. Well, I think a number, if they're gonna say justify that number, that's gonna be pretty hard to do. They have to be five miles apart, why? That'd be, that'd be hard to do, just, we can't just say, because we think so, you know, there has to be.
An ultimate.
A reason behind that five mile.
I'm, I'm with you completely.
Yeah.
The, the, ultimately, the landowner has to be the, the steward of the land.
Mm-hmm.
That's the ultimate, that, that's the, that's the top of the pyramid, we're working underneath that.
All of regulations are two-edged sword. They're there to protect and there to hinder or restrict, yeah, they all, but they're necessary, but both sides need to be thought of. I mean, if, if you make it to where it's financially feasible, then it won't happen.
Right.
But then, we could be missing out on tax revenue, and landowners could be missing out on, on revenue, and then some other county might get it, some other state might get it.
Let's, let's, let's put a pin in that one, and Mark, if you don't mind putting those numbers in as a starting point, let's, let's take that back as homework to, to come back next month, and let's, let's do a little research, see what.
See what, what it takes to be financially viable.
Well, I don't know that, I, I don't know what that looks like. Maybe six hundred and forty acres isn't the right number, maybe, maybe five miles isn't the right number, we just need to.
Point of, you know, proximity to a transmission line is definitely a factor, you know, right now, I mean, that's like why they wanted to put the, the wind stuff where they did, because their existing transmission lines, and they've been trying to do, recording a lot of those to solar leases, is my understanding, for the same reason, you've got the transmission lines already there.
For sure.
It's easy to hook into, it's cheap.
Yep.
Yep.
I agree. I, I, let's just, let's, let's all come with a number next month on what that looks like. Number two in the list, we've, we've already kind of touched on that briefly about the landfill, about prohibit disposal, I think we just, I don't wanna say hands-off, but I wanted to say that we, we attack that when the CUP comes live.
That needs input from the landfill, and, and, of course, if the landfill says they can take it, that's approval from the county commission, and if the landfill says they can't, then obviously, it probably won't happen, but that needs probably to be decided not here.
At the CUP level, when that, when that time comes, okay?
So, they might show up at the public hearing and say, this is a concern?
Or, or we ask through in that public hearing process that, for that input from the, from the landfill. Yep. Wildlife connectivity?
To me, that's dependent upon size of the project.
Yeah, I think that, I think that does, that number one and number three go hand in hand.
Yeah.
Number four, fees for inspections, I, I guess I need to understand where we're headed with that, I, I, I know it was our baby, but I, I'm trying to remember what context we were.
If I recall, and, and Garth, help me out, you know, I, I thought it had to do with the company having to reimburse the county for any types of inspection that we have to do to ensure compliance with the CUP, I believe is where you're going, is that correct, Garth?
Well, I'm looking on, on our article twenty-six, page twenty-six-three, three, well, it's number four, and it says, we agreed to reimburse the county for all unusual and extraordinary expenses. Well, how, what is an unusual, how, how does that get decided? I don't know that it's enough money to, you know, to get excited about, but it could be, you know, a big project. I just don't know the process from your office, Mark, how, how fees are, well, I'm gonna charge you for this, and this is what I, what I'm gonna charge you.
When he goes out, looks at violations, there's nobody charged. So, we don't, this, his department. I mean, it's built into a permit fee.
Yeah.
Yes. You know, if somebody does a subdivision, you're, we're charging a fee for them to file that, and part of that is to pay for your time to go out there and look at it, take pictures.
Number four, I was trying to think how to answer, number, number four there, Garth, in the, in the regulations, that was a carryover from wind, and that has to do with if the county has to rent a, a larger venue, if the county has to hire an AV company to record or assist with communications for the public hearing, that type of stuff. It didn't have to do with necessarily inspections or anything like that, so that's what number four there is talking about.
That only applies to the, the application or the conduct of the public hearing.
Yes, yeah, right, right, Steve. So, that's what, you know, like during the wind process, you know, we had to rent the hotel room, and we had to rent an audiovisual company to tape-record the, the meetings, we had additional expenses above and beyond conducting a public hearing in this facility here. So, I think what you're asking for in that has to do with if we have to go out and inspect the project, I don't anticipate that with, you know, a solar farm, and if, if we did have something like that, chances are, we would probably be hiring a third-party company to do those inspections, in which case, that expense would be reimbursed by the, the company that's doing the solar farm.
I, I see where you're at for, and I think we leave it in, cover those contingencies.
I think if a project comes through and, and say that the county needs to hire an engineering firm to inspect that it's being built per regulation, then that's part of the developer's agreement that the county will make with the developer, that they will pay for that engineering firm that we hire.
So, that doesn't need to be in the regulations then?
Well, what he's, what Mark put in there was, was only for the, the expenses incurred.
Process, that the.
You know, or the application, or, you know, the, the CUP hearing process, basically. So, like you say, if you have to rent a, like, we had to rent a four-age building or something at the fairgrounds.
Just like we did at wind.
Yeah, wind, you know, when that was being done, and.
And they paid for that.
Yeah, so, yeah. Well, yeah, leave that in there, I understand where it is.
But I don't, that's not in anywhere, that was a suggestion that we have sometime here.
And it's.
I just don't know how big of an issue it was to, to discern what is unusual and extraordinary, it may depend on how many zeros are in the number, if a developer says, what do you, what do you mean, you charged me nine thousand dollars to rent this place?
Unusual or extraordinary, but anything that has to be done outside of this, this setting.
I think anything outside this normal procedure to get a permit, then they, like, should, they should be subject to pay for, like, if we have to rent a venue or something, that should be.
Or, we would want to, if we'd feel compelled to hire an outside expert.
And it's, I, I'm trying to fight it, it's, it's, I think, I, I don't see it right away that the county reserves the right to hire, like, an engineering company to ensure compliance with the conditional use permit and the regulations.
Which would be inspection.
Which would be the inspections, so I, I believe it's covered, unless you were thinking of something else with, with your discussion point.
You're okay, I'm okay.
So, how did you get him to agree to pay for the expenses of renting the room and audiovisual equipment and stuff?
We just, we asked, and they, and they agreed.
Okay.
To do that, as a good, as a good faith gesture, we asked them to do that, and they agreed to, to pay, and we came to a, agreed-upon amount that they would cover for us, because we explained to them that because of the complexity of this, that we're gonna, we don't have a county facility available to conduct this type of public hearing, and so they were forthcoming and agreeing to put forth a, a certain dollar amount that they would reimburse us.
Well, my, my, my last read-through I did this afternoon went back to a comment that Don made about regulation, and it, you know, it has to be specific, there's, you know, there's not this gray stuff that's left, you know, what is the measurement? Well, a regulation is very specific, and so I have a few examples of things like this, that, well, what is unusual and extraordinary? I have no idea.
So, do you?
I think that should be.
What's, what's, what's the appetite? What's the, what's the county's appetite? In excess of one thousand dollars? In excess of, all unusual and extraordinary expenses above, you know, exceeding five hundred dollars incurred?
Let me ask, let me ask.
You put a dollar amount, or I think you put.
When you process a CUP, you know, I mean, do we have, what expenses do we have other than, you know, personnel?
You have publication costs in the newspaper, that, that's the, that was a large one, that's since gone down, but then you also have notification of, of landowners. Those are the, the major expenses, then we have, of course, the mailing of, of the staff report to the planning commission, a lot, some of that goes to, like, your time and effort, you know, in here as well, but.
Oh, good, hey.
You didn't know that?
Did you know that?
That's where the extraordinary expenses come in.
Yeah, your mileage and stuff, I mean, that's where that would fall in, but, yeah, mainly, it's the publication of the paper, the notice to the property owners, and/or possibly the mailing of the packet, you know, I'm, I'm mailing a paper packet to you, those, as you can probably see, are not, you know, cheap, and so, the fee goes to offsetting those types of expenses.
But all those are ordinary fees.
All of the ordinary fees.
So, so now, this would, that wouldn't apply for any of.
But when you're going to the point where we're possibly notifying a thousand or two thousand people, that would be an extraordinary expense, that it's above and beyond what our normal notification.
You don't have any doubt that if somebody wants to put a project in Reno County, and you should present that, then, that they'd say, yeah?
Yeah, I don't.
No doubt.
Not if they want one.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have a concern with that, I think, I think they would negotiate that price in good faith with the county, and agree to certain expenses, which we would explain to them through our discussions, you know, our, our limitations.
And if one of these goes in, it will exceed our.
Yeah.
Normality. That's the kind of discussion you'd have the first time you talked with them, is that, you know, when they say, what's covering this much, ninety square miles, and you can say, well, this is gonna cost. The number of notifications, we automatically know, okay, that's, that's more than.
More than normal.
Yeah, that's, we don't have that budget.
Right. I got you. So, that, that paragraph four in the regulations, and then that.
I'll see if I can, it's a good, good discussion point, I'll see if I can.
I think it needs.
Further define that.
The wording a little bit.
Yeah, I think so.
So, I think, you know.
I think it needs to be more. I think it needs to be more.
To the point.
Clear.
Try to put in words what I just told this board as far as, so, without being too worded.
Without adding a page.
Yeah. I hate regulations that aren't precise.
Yeah.
Clear, crystal clear.
Okay. And the conversation topics, number five, requiring a bond for decommissioning. We talked about that in the surety, surety agreement.
Surety agreement, yeah.
The groundwater and soil testing, that's already discussed in the, in the resolution in, for the development agreement.
Right.
Right.
Seven.
And seven, it's, one, three, and seven are all interconnected to some extent.
Seven, I think, is impractical, to be honest with you. You know, I mean, if you're going to fence around a facility, you're not going to have a stop foot off the ground.
I'm.
Because the fence is to keep people out of it.
Yeah. When I'm putting electric fence up for cows and calves, I'm not putting it up three feet in the air. I'm putting it down.
Yeah.
Like, the last two are for, were from GALEF, correct me if I'm wrong. So, if you had any, I know, I know you had talked about groundwater and soil testing last time, and we had discussions, and then the fencing as well.
Well, we have groundwater monitoring already in the bylaws.
And I think the, you know, wildlife corridors, that's going to come in, and I think that will become an issue if we, depending upon the size of the project. You know, if you have 5,000 acres, then you're going to have to have breaks to allow the, you know, Bambi's and whatnot to, to get through.
Or it could be the location, even on a smaller project.
It could, yeah.
Depending on habitat and, you know, next to a highway or something, you might want to have some consideration.
Okay. So, number seven, do we even consider?
I think I've read that in Douglas County's regs, that they had something, something like that. As a developer, I don't think I would really want to be faced with that. I mean, you, you have a lot of equipment, and you don't want animals coming in and chewing you through your whatever.
Yep. You don't want little kids coming.
Or digging, or kids.
I mean, if it's a foot off the ground, you know, 12-year-old kid crawling or.
I can roll underfoot if I need to.
May not get up again.
May not get up again. All right. So, number seven, we just, we're going to just, that's not a conversation point. We'll, we'll discuss the core wildlife corridors with the wildlife connectivity. Is that fair, is that a fair statement?
Okay.
Yeah.
Is there anything else in the rest of the document? Any question or, or accept all the changes I had in yellow? Everything's good.
I have a question on page 26-5. Between number three and number four, I like the number three where it says, a written document from. And, well, I guess it's not four. I guess it's the next paragraph in three. It just says, where applicable, the applicant is supposed to contact regarding the project, and a written document will be submitted, stating that the project has been reviewed. But I guess if we're going to require a written document from, for Kansas Department of Wildlife, why wouldn't we require a written document from these other organizations?
That last sentence does require.
Well, no, it says it's to be submitted by the applicant, not by the agency.
Yeah, I read that as, I can just say, well, yeah, I contact.
Send them a letter or something. I'd hurt my back.
Okay. I was, I was, I was looking at it.
I don't think so. That's, that's why I always say, where applicable.
I don't think there's a, a district everywhere. I don't know.
I'd say, I said, where applicable, because I don't know if.
Where, where a district exists.
Yeah.
Is probably what it should say.
Most of it is, but I don't think, not every single part, maybe within a, a GMD.
Well, you can still say, where applicable, within a written document from. Because the difference to me is, the written document from the agency is verification that they have actually been contacted, you know, just like we hear from.
FAA.
Yeah.
For a tower.
Yeah.
He's going to say, you know, you just want us to take out the where applicable and just say, a written document from.
I, I, I thought the word applicable meant where a water management district exists.
Right.
And where one does exist, they, they shall submit.
Yes. Well, it says, a written document shall be submitted by the applicant. It doesn't say that it's, should be a written document from the groundwater management district.
Maybe, maybe it just say, a written document shall be submitted from, from each agency as applicable, applicable, stating the project has been reviewed.
Or is being reviewed.
But this submitted from the applicant is the paperwork from the water management district.
So, according to the State Department of Ag, the entire zoned area is a part of GMD-2.
Okay.
So, do we just want to have them provide a letter from GMD-2 that they submit the project?
Simplify it.
Yep. That's fine.
Okay. Done.
Good research.
You did earn your salt for tonight. I knew it was. I knew it wasn't.
We're potentially pushing it out west.
Yep. We're not discussing that right now, but that, this, that doesn't mean this may not get pushed west.
Yeah. Okay. We got that taken care of.
I'll make it.
What's that?
I'm good with that.
That doesn't mean that this won't get pushed west, and that wouldn't be the case everywhere out west.
No, that'd be GMD-5.
Yeah. Right.
I'll make it.
Are you going to say, or if applicable, GMD-5?
Yeah.
Let's not talk about that subject.
Let's leave it.
I was going to say.
This is zoner.
I hear some worms being opened over here.
Yeah.
Electric cannon going. No, that's over there off of 4th Street.
Yeah. Okay. Well, then I do have a question on number four, right underneath that, a qualified third-party. Same, same logic. Well, what, what will we accept? Maybe it's the, maybe it's the brother-in-law's firm of the developer.
Look at 26-2, number nine, if we define what a qualified third-party company is.
Thank you. There you go. Got it covered.
Thank you.
You catch?
Yeah. It's covered under there. Any other comments on those, on the changes that were made?
Probably would not use that term unless it was defined, so that's why.
I think I've mentioned this at some point in the past, on 26-6, number eight, putting the onus on the applicant to provide a list of required agencies that are supposed to weigh in on this. It just bothers me, I guess, a little bit, the wording, that we leave it up to them to determine.
So, I mean, you have the applicant, or Mark's got to figure out, you know.
Yeah.
Who they need to contact.
What if they don't contact?
Well, then isn't that between the developer and the agency? They're violating their regulations.
Yep. And then therefore.
Or, under the conditional use permit, oh, so-and-so didn't get.
Well, as a great, part of the condition, the conditional use permit, it'd be that they met all required.
Right.
State, federal, you know, requirements.
This is just trying to get out ahead of that and contact all the agencies that are appropriate and, so.
Well, the last sentence says that on eight.
Yeah. And then we qualify this, as that the, the CUP approval, you know, doesn't grant them the authority.
What is it? Is it really intended to let us off the hook? And, like, if we, if we say, well, or we just don't realize that a certain agency is, needs to be contacted, and then a problem comes up later, the way this is worded, well, it's, it's the developer's fault, because we don't, we don't have any responsibility in this regulation. Is that?
I think it's more about, like with Steve, that it's to assist me in making sure I send a public hearing notice to all the appropriate agencies and make sure that that applicant is doing their due diligence and contacting everybody that they need to contact about a potential project. So, I don't know about.
Will you send those notices based on what the applicant gives you then?
Yeah. I'll send them the, the application, so.
And would you ever add to that, thinking, well, we do it more, agencies?
You mean, add, add additional agencies in the book?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean.
If you see a gap, you're going to send them out, but you're going to send it to that gap.
Yeah. I mean.
Yeah. Or like if he's contacted by some agencies, hey, they got to go through us to do this too. Oh.
I mean, if I, if I'm required to send it to, you know, Army Corps Rangers, well, for example, you know, like, we have to send to the corps, say, for example, as well. I'm also going to send it to the township board. I'm going to send it to the fire district and emergency management. And I'm going to send it to anybody who's anybody on, on something like, a project like this, so I can get input from as many people as I, I possibly can. Am I required to? No, probably not. I'm not required to send it to the township board, but I do it as a common courtesy to get their input, because it could be in their, along their township roads. And so.
So, this really just puts the onus on the applicant?
Yeah. To give me that list, because it's going to help them in the long run, that, oh, yes, we have to contact this agency here, so this agency could potentially write me a letter and sign off saying, yes, that this applicant has been in contact with us, and we're working on granting an approval for that.
You would think that they would know what agencies that they need to run the hoops better than we would, other than our internal ones that they, that we want to add.
Exactly. They, they, they're, they're going to know. They should know.
But when I think of disastrous development projects around the country, I don't have confidence in that.
Right.
I mean, things happen, and you think, how did that ever happen?
Well, the CUP covers it, going back to the last statement, you know, must meet all applicable federal, state, and local regulations. And so, if somebody objects to something, and they can't get the project in compliance with that agency, then we could revoke the conditional use permit under that, that scenario.
The applicant, they're in business, doing business, and we're not, we're not, they're not novices.
Yeah.
They know what to do, and, and they've, they've had failures, and they want success. And they're going to do it right.
I mostly agree with you, but when I think of disastrous projects, which are not that hard to come up with around the country, they have.
They're all run by the federal government.
Oh.
We're not talking about.
I'm thinking of the atrium project right here in Hutchinson, that we, we, the city wound up with that thing in their lap. So, I guess that's what's on my mind, is, is trying to avoid the disasters.
Well, you only do what you can do to protect yourself that you know about. I mean, Mark, can't expect Mark to be authority on all regulatory agencies in the United States. You know, the magic checklist from some national organization that they give you. Check here on a solar farm, you know.
And, and the onus shouldn't be on Mark and the county. Like, you know, if, say, a developer didn't get approval from the corporation commission, well, that's, we're land use regulators. That's not our business. Or they don't have a spot in the regional grid. You know, that's, none of that's our business.
And it's covered if not, if they don't, you know, get what they appropriate people they need to, then that's on them. And it says that, or else they're, they won't, their application will be denied, or permit will be revoked.
It, it's on them, but if construction is started, and then it gets halted, and they go bankrupt.
Well, that's why we have a certi. It covers that in the happenstance.
We have it. I, I hear what you're saying. Yeah, you want to prevent that, that disaster. Ultimately, we're enforcing our land use, and we're going to do our darndest to get everybody to the table that needs to have a notice here to get their input. But if something, you know, is, is amiss, then, you know, it's, ultimately, it's on that applicant. And then, like Steve said, in this, in this good case, then we'll have the money in place to be able to remedy that situation, we hope, you know, with, with that. Because unlike some other projects, like, you know, you, you had mentioned, you know, there wasn't that money in place, and so, we're stuck with the mess. But this case.
If the city had a certi bond on the atrium, then go.
Right. They'd be calling on that.
Spending millions of dollars taking care of it.
But if you're required a certi bond on every building that's going to be built.
Nothing would ever be built.
I mean, not every building.
Everybody goes somewhere else.
What are you doing on, on industrial remedy bonds that you're doing and stuff like that?
But even like the atrium, I mean, we used it for 15, 20 years after the last round of.
It was built in the 60s.
Yeah. But I was thinking the, the convention center updates in the mid 2000s. I mean, it's still, you know, it's been decades. We've.
Yeah.
Any other questions on the changes?
What else, Mr. Fran?
Bring it on.
Well, I do have.
Don't you ever get hungry?
I ate before I did.
I'm starving.
Okay. On 26-11, this is another one of those. Is it specific enough? Number one, at the top of the page, construction shall commence within two years. Well, what is, what does that mean? And I, I guess I'm thinking of contracts that I've had experience with, and it gets to substantial completion. And, well, that's when you have to, you know, put up most of the money. Well, what is substantial completion? So, what, if, if somebody is dragging their feet, maybe they've run into financial problems, and they come and park a grader out there and make a few laps and stir the dirt. Is that construction? And so, then it sits there for another period of time? I know there's a one-year extension possibility in here, but same, the same thought would occur.
Well, the, the effective date, like I said, is the date on the county resol, on the approved conditional use permit on the resolution. So, that'll be the effective date. And so, they'll have two years to.
Begin construction.
Begin construction. Okay. And then.
They got to start construction on that. And then, if it's not completed, then they'll have to get potentially a one-year extension on it. And if it's not done, then that's Board of County Commissioner.
Well, what's going to make you happy as far as, oh, well, we've already started construction.
So, if they, they've got 730 days to start construction.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. On day 725, they roll, in Garth's example, they roll a grader in there and just plow one window of dirt. Is that considered starting construction?
Yeah. They're starting the construction on it, yeah. Unless we want to get more specific on something, but, but on the next, you know, we, we, they've got to go through that extension process potentially if.
If they don't.
If they don't.
They have started construction, they have to get an extension.
Yeah.
But we have nothing.
But we have nothing in there that, that says, okay, construction has to be completed by, like, a two-year window or something like that, saying that after X period of time, if you haven't started construction, then the CUP is rescinded.
I mean, I.
Because you should have had it done by now.
Yeah, I mean, they have a very good point, I agree one-hundred percent. They could roll in there in two years and make a run row, windrow of dirt fifteen foot long and then walk away. Oh, I've started. I don't know about the, I don't know what percentages goes in there, or the end of construction has to be done by, depends on the size of the project, so, you know, I don't know, but I understand exactly your point. It can't be just that. They have two years.
Instead of saying start.
They have to start, but once they start, they need to continue, and that's not in there.
There has to be a completion date or something.
Something where they have to continue. So that's something you guys have to.
If they don't meet those terms, then.
That needs to come, that, then there needs to be something written there that that's written into the developer's agreement.
That needs to be added to that then.
Yep, because the developer's agreement will determine, by the time they get to, the, the CUP's done, I'm sure our questions are gonna be in that process, how long is this project gonna take to, for you to construct?
Because.
And then, then at that point, we can, that, that, that'll be a piece of the record. The county commission can use that information as part of their development agreement to say, okay, the developer said, if we start on X day, we should be done on X day, and then they can determine that in the developer's agreement, so there needs, that, there's another line in the developer's agreement on.
So you want it in the resolution?
In the, in the resolution that says, we need to know.
Commissioners should know.
The commissioners need to know, yes, the estimated project construction timeline. Because weather's, I mean, it's no different than putting a roundabout here on Woodyseed Freeway. You know that that project is gonna start weather permitting on day X, and that contractor has X days to finish that project.
Or he gets fined.
Or he gets fined.
Per day.
Or, but you, that's that same concept.
I do that all the time.
But you understand what I'm, what I'm trying to, trying to articulate.
So when the county commissioners, when the developer agreement's being made and they're talking to the applicant, the applicant knows, okay, by the day they start, weather permitting, whatever, how long it should take, so they're not gonna just go in there and, and dig a hole and then walk away for a year.
It goes to Harley's point, these guys are professionals.
Yeah.
They know what it takes to put a pole in the ground and put a panel up. They understand what potential a hundred acres is gonna take to, to, to construct, or two-hundred acres, or a thousand acres.
That is something that should be discussed.
Can we put in there something like, because I was just looking at, oh, like on twenty-six-one-oh-six, contents of development plan and planning operations, you know, there's nothing in there that requires them to provide, you know, an overview of the project, which would include an estimated completion date.
Where, where'd you ask Steve?
Twenty-six-one-oh-six, beyond the, like, twenty-six-three.
What number, what letter did you say?
Uh, I'm just sorry, twenty-six-one-oh-six, in general, I mean, there's nothing in there that really requires like a, a, a project overview, if you will, or estimated completion date, which maybe we could add.
Estimated construction duration or something like that.
Something like that, you know.
But that, that may not, we, okay, it's, it's, that's a fine line on land use. I think, I think that needs to stay in that, in that.
And number two, it does say anticipated construction schedule.
Yeah.
General description, general site, describes to a number seven.
Oh, yeah, done.
What'd you add?
Number two, at the last, yeah, right here.
Oh, anticipated construction schedule, yes.
So I think it's still the, I, I still stand that it probably ought to be in that development agreement resolution, that we, that they define the construction schedule, not just tell us at the public hearing that they think it'll take this, when they get to the development plan, development plan stage, they already know what's gonna happen, and they will know their duration will start on day, let's just say it starts on day eighty, after, after the resolution with the county commissioner starts, they know that that date, they'll start, they have all their stuff in line. They know from that point to point in, that it's gonna take seven-hundred days to, to, to put, weather permitting, it's gonna take seven-hundred days to put up a thousand acres, or whatever that number is. They should, that should be a conversation point that the commissioners have, based on what we recommend in the resolution.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna go spin around here for a second and ask you something. So as far as that land use subject, and as far as the, the, nothing's tore up, people are getting paid their lease, why do you care how long a project takes to get finished? That's not a land use subject.
Well, we're not trying to regulate it, but they need to understand that there's, they, we don't, we, we wanna, we want it in the, in the resolution for the development agreement, only to protect, to, to, well, protect that land, that's part of the protection piece for the landowner, hopefully the commissioners see that in that resolution and say, hey, we probably need to keep on track with this, so that developer doesn't just go in and push a fifteen-foot-long windrow and walk away.
Well, from a land use perspective, thinking of myself as a neighbor to this project, I might be okay with, okay, there's gonna be a solar farm across the road from me. I don't want it to be a nine-year construction project. I'll accept the solar farm, I don't want this half-done thing getting drug out and drug out and drug out. Would that be land use?
Now, if it's half-done, but they're maintaining their fence, they're paying their leases and paying their taxes, is that a problem? Do we care?
That was my point. I, I get it, but.
They could do it in phases, if they so choose.
They put two-hundred-and-fifty acres in, because that's their, and they get to that point and they say, we're gonna pause for another year for whatever business reasons or.
Right.
The market for electricity or whatever, and then they come back another year and.
Put another two-hundred-and-fifty in.
Yeah, do we care?
You could care, I guess, through the conditional use permit process, you know, you could put timelines on that, you know, we, every conditional use permit we approve, we could say, well, this project is fine as long as it commences within two years, we haven't done that on certain things, but, and, you know, the question would be, well, why, but it would be within your realm to do that.
So maybe that's a case-by-case, because if you have a project that's, you know, surrounded with, you know, near Kent Road, say, for example, you know, that's, the process of construction has a much different effect on the neighbors than, say, if it's out in the sand hills, five miles east of there, along the county line. You know, if you have a, a section project going on out there and there's no neighbors, why do we care how long it takes to finish construction?
Right. We're gonna care if the scope of the project changes, you know, if they want to add more, so.
Right, because that would be something that would trigger a new.
But it's an approved land use, like any other conditional use permit, we're gonna approve XYZ company to be located on this property, and if they don't build it for five years after the CUP, then. Case in point, the coffee shop in Yoder, they started construction on it. They have, finally, but yes, yeah, exactly. That was three, four, was that, three years ago? I think that was twenty-twenty-one, we approved that, and they're just now starting construction. It, it sat vacant for three years and didn't do anything, is that a big deal?
We all survived, didn't we?
Yeah.
Coffee would have been nice, but.
Well, that, I think that's different than if they would have started and had materials stacked up, a half-done building that could be some safety issues, so, yeah, it does depend. I don't know how we say that in regulation, but, and then, because we have in these regulations, I think there's somewhere that says, it is okay during the construction period to have things on site, or, I forget, I forget where that's at or what it says, but something about the construction time period, there's some leeway about what's acceptable.
I think in the development agreement, the construction period should be discussed there.
I think that's, that's where it needs to be documented.
I'd be okay with that, I just think it's an issue that should have conversation.
Yeah, I do too, but there's no way you could determine what a length of time should be.
It's gonna vary from project to project, too.
And, and situation to situation, too.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe it is phases.
But, you know, maybe we put something in the resolution, list and stuff in the resolution to.
That's something I need to consider.
Add, add something to that. The resolution that we've already told Mark to turn over to the attorney, yeah. Change it, Mark.
Add another one.
Change one.
Why he just paid the big bucks.
I know, I know.
You're right.
So is that twenty-six-one-oh-nine-one, is it getting moved then to the resolution?
No.
Or we want to leave that, that construction shall commence within two years of the effective date?
Well, that's a, that, that needs to stay.
That needs to stay, that needs to stay in the regulations. I, we just need to know in the, in that resolution, uh, scope of, of, scope of project, or, or scope of, of construction timing and.
Timeline of project timeline, beginning and ending.
Yep.
Yeah, it's one thing to give them two years to get started, maybe a year grace period after that, it's another thing to start the project that should take a year and it takes ten.
Yeah.
That's two separate subjects, but.
Add like a construction timeline or something into, into the development agreement topics.
And then if the county commissioners or whoever don't want that, then they don't have to put it in there.
Yep, it's up to them.
It's up to them.
What else?
I think that's after my last one.
What do you mean?
On twenty-six thirteen, bottom of the page, number three, since I've learned the definition of a qualified third-party company earlier this evening, should number three say that?
Qualified engineering company.
Confirmation from a qualified third-party.
Change it to a qualified third-party.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Use it whatever you call it in here.
Yeah.
Qualified third-party company.
Yeah.
Do what you call it.
What else, Gars?
Done?
I risked my case.
Jack's tummy is rumbling over here. Any other discussion on Article twenty-six? Good discussion this evening. Appreciate all the, all the back and forth.
I, I had one question. Hey, twenty-six-seven, on twenty-six-seven down there at the bottom lighting, you got highlighted, no light poles?
Yeah, what we discussed, we don't, we not discussed that we didn't want to have any lights at the facility? We don't even have the thing lit up.
Only, only lights were for security if there was a building that was gonna be built up.
Right, okay.
I don't think I've ever seen a solar.
Yeah.
Thing was light. I don't think so either, I think, yeah. Rather than say, okay, well, show us where you want light poles, you say, yeah, no light poles.
Okay.
Let it be cheap, cheap lights.
Yeah.
For sure, for sure. Anything else? Staff, do you have anything else that needs to come before this board?
No. I'd like to thank you for all your work. Didn't report a gap, I think.
That would be Gala's taxi driver. Want to thank you all for a good year, and I wish you all a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Happy New Year to you.
And Chair will entertain a motion.
A move. Second.
Second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.